To target none other than His Excellency President R. Marcos Jr., First Lady Luis Araneta Marcos, and our esteemed Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes. Let us pause for a moment, Mr. Speaker, to reflect on the gravity of this revelation. The second highest official of the land, someone who took an oath to protect and uphold the Constitution, has admitted to contemplating violence, violence against the very people she swore to serve alongside. This is not just alarming, it is a betrayal of public trust and an affront to our democratic values and a threat to the stability of our nation. Mr. Speaker, how can we as representatives of the Filipino people stand silent in the face of such a heinous admission? The Vice President's statements are not only a direct threat to the lives of our leaders, but a dangerous precedent that undermines the very foundation of our democratic governance. If someone in her position feels emboldened to admit to such acts, what message does this... No matter how high his or her position stands above the law, the Vice President's actions demand not just condemnation, but thorough investigation. This is not just about politics. This is about justice, accountability, and the preservation of our nation's dignity. Let me be clear, there is no place in our government, in our democracy, for such reckless and dangerous behavior. The office of the Vice President should embody integrity and leadership, not serve as a platform for threats and violence. The Filipino people deserve better, Mr. Speaker. They deserve leaders who inspire trust, who uphold the rule of law, and who work tirelessly to serve the nation with honor and dignity. This House must take a stand. We must demand a full accounting of the Vice President's action and hold her to the highest standards of accountability. Anything less would be a disservice to the principles we swore to uphold and to the Filipino people we serve. Mr. Speaker, let us send a clear and unequivocal message. This House will not tolerate threats to our democracy. Our leaders or our people, we will defend the rule of law and ensure that justice prevails. Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker.
Maraming salamat, Representative Albert S. Garcia, Second District of Batang. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Wilfredo Marc M. Enverga of the First District of Quezon to deliver his manifestation.
The gentleman from the First District of Quezon, Representative Wilfredo Marc M. Enverga. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, I rise today to firmly and unequivocally defend the integrity, honor, and exemplary leadership of our esteemed Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes against baseless and malicious accusations hurled by Vice President Sara Duterte. First, let us confront the outrageous claim that the Speaker, a man who has dedicated his life to public service and the betterment of Filipino people, harbored any intent to harm the Vice President. Mr. Speaker, such allegations are not only preposterous, they are designed to distract and divide. They lack even a shred of evidence and are nothing more than a desperate attempt to tarnish the Speaker's reputation. Our Speaker has consistently demonstrated his commitment to democratic governance, transparency, and public service. Under his leadership, this House has passed landmark legislation to uplift the lives of our fellow Filipinos, recover from economic challenges, and ensure national security. These are the actions of leader who serves with integrity and purpose, not one who engages in petty, baseless conspiracies. Second, let us address the Vice President's claim that the Speaker is involved in illicit activities. Mr. Speaker, these accusations are as hollow as they are reckless. They are not supported by facts, evidence, or any credible source. They are only to sow mistrust and undermine the Speaker's hard-earned credibility. Let us be clear, this House will not allow baseless mudslinging to derail our mission of serving the people. What drives these accusations, Mr. Speaker? Is it political ambition? Or is it simply a refusal to accept the Speaker's growing stature as a unifying and decisive leader? Whatever the motive, one thing is clear: these attacks do not reflect on Speaker's character. They reflect on desperation of those who make them. Mr. Speaker, the Filipino people deserve leaders who focus on solutions, not divisiveness, on progress, and not lies. Speaker Romualdes embodies these values. He has guided this House with wisdom, fairness, and a steadfast dedication to the people we serve. His record speaks for itself, and no amount of baseless accusations can erase the accomplishments he has achieved for this nation. In closing, let me say this: the truth will always prevail over lies. This House stands firmly behind Speaker Romualdes, not just because he is our leader, but because he represents the values of integrity, accountability, and service that we all aspire to uphold. We will not be swayed by baseless attacks, and we will continue to stand united in our commitment to serving the Filipino people. Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker.
Maraming salamat, First District Quezon, Representative Wilfredo Marc M. Enverga. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Robert A. S. Barbers of the Second District of Surigao del Norte for his manifestation.
The gentleman of the Second District of Surigao del Norte, Representative Robert A. S. Barbers. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, Majority Leader. Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, I rise today not only to defend the honor of this House, but to uphold the integrity and unwavering leadership of our Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes against the baseless accusations made by the Vice President Sara Duterte. These accusations that our Speaker intended to harm her or that he is involved in illicit activities are nothing but unfounded and irresponsible allegations meant to distract and discredit. First, Mr. Speaker, let us recognize the kind of leadership Speaker Romualdes has exemplified. Under his stewardship, this House has worked tirelessly to pass transformative legislation that directly impacts the lives of millions of Filipinos. From championing economic recovery measures to addressing pressing national security concerns, the Speaker's vision and decisive leadership have steered this chamber toward progress and stability. These are the qualities of a statesman, one who places the nation's welfare above all else. Second, Mr. Speaker, let us consider the gravity of the accusations hurled against him. To accuse someone of plotting harm or engaging in illicit activities without a shred of evidence is not only reckless but dangerous. Such baseless statements undermine the very fabric of our democratic institutions. They erode public trust and divert attention from the real issues our nation faces. These allegations, Mr. Speaker, are nothing more than a desperate attempt to smear the reputation of a man who has consistently demonstrated his commitment to serving the Filipino people. If there were any truth to these claims, let them be backed by credible evidence. But what we see here is not evidence, it is mere noise crafted to create division and chaos where unity and focus are most needed. Let us also ask: why is the Speaker being targeted? Is it because of his success in uniting this House under a shared vision for progress? Is it because his leadership has garnered respect and trust not just from his colleagues here, but from the Filipinos at large? Or is it simply because his integrity and competence stand as a stark contrast to those who thrive on baseless accusations and political theatrics? Mr. Speaker, this chamber must stand firm against attempts to tarnish the reputation of its leader. Speaker Romualdes has always conducted himself with honor and dedication. His track record of service speaks louder than any false accusation, and his commitment to the rule of law and public accountability remains unshaken. I have known you, Mr. Speaker, as a conscientious public servant. In the short span that you have discharged your duties as Speaker, I can honestly say that you have treated all of us fairly and that in all the conduct of affairs you have always displayed decency, bearing, and character that bespeaks of a statesman. Through all the attacks and accusations that comes with the position, I see you always taking the high moral ground. By any measure, your calm and calculated bearing stand tall among all of us amidst all the crisis, a distinct trait that all leaders must possess. In closing, Mr. Speaker, I urge my colleagues and the Filipino people to focus on what truly matters: the Speaker's consistent efforts to build a stronger, more united, and more prosperous Philippines. Let us not allow baseless accusations to distract us from our shared mission of service to the nation. The Speaker has our trust, our confidence, and our unwavering support. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Maraming salamat, Representative Robert A. S. Barbers, Second District, Surigao del Norte. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Rosana Rida V. Vergara of the Third District of Neiva Isia to deliver her manifestation.
Representative Rosana Rida V. Vergara, Third District, Neiva Isia. You are recognized, ma'am. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, I rise today to address and firmly refute the baseless and malicious accusations being spread that Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes is attempting to destroy the Vice President because of a supposed ambition to run for president in 2028. These claims are not only unfounded, but are an insult to the Speaker's character and his unwavering commitment to public service. It is also an attack to the integrity of the House of Representatives as an institution. We cannot allow this. We must not. Mr. Speaker, let us set the record straight. Speaker Romualdes has demonstrated time and again that his focus is solely on his duties as the leader of this House. Under his guidance and leadership, we have successfully passed critical legislation that addresses the urgent needs of the Filipino people, including measures on economic recovery, national security, and social services. His record of service is rooted in action, not ambition. The Speaker's leadership is not about personal political gain, it is about building a stronger, united Philippines. If there is one thing Speaker Romualdes has consistently shown, it is his ability to rise above political noise and focus on the issues that truly matter to our constituents. The allegations that the Speaker is using his position to target the Vice President are as absurd as they are divisive. These claims are nothing more than an attempt to deflect attention from her own failures and controversies. The Vice President's struggles to navigate her own responsibilities as a public official should not be blamed on the Speaker's competence or leadership. Mr. Speaker, let us ask: why would someone who has consistently demonstrated loyalty to the administration of President Ferdinand R. Marcos Jr. and who has been a staunch ally of its programs engage in such petty political games? The truth is, these accusations are a convenient excuse for the Vice President to evade accountability for her actions and distract the public from her lack of concrete achievements. Let us also recognize the Speaker's longstanding reputation for unity and collaboration. His efforts to build coalitions across party lines and his dedication to fostering a harmonious relationship with the executive branch contradict the notion that is driven by personal ambition. This is a leader who values service over self-interest and progress over politics. Mr. Speaker, I urge our colleagues and the Filipino people to see these claims for what they are: desperate attempts to sow division and tarnish the reputation of an exemplary public servant and the institution that he leads. Speaker Martin Romualdes is focused on his duties today, not on ambitions for tomorrow. His commitment to this House and to the Filipino people remains steadfast, and no amount of baseless accusations can detract from this. This House stands united behind Speaker Romualdes. We will not be distracted by false narratives, nor will we allow them to undermine the important work we do for the Filipino people. Let us stay focused on the task at hand and continue to serve with integrity, unity, and dedication. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Thank you, Congresswoman Rosana Rida V. Vergara of the Third District of Neiva Isia. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Erwin Tulfo of the ACT-CIS party list for his manifestation.
ACT-CIS party list, Representative Erwin T. Tulfo. You are recognized, sir. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, allow me to read the manifesto of the party list coalition as directed by the party list leaders. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, the party list coalition clearly see a diversion of attention away from the mounting evidence of fund misuse under the office of the Vice President and the Department of Education. Mr. Speaker, the allegation of financial irregularities involving the OBP and the DEP Ed are serious and demand answers. The Filipino people deserve accountability, transparency, and honesty from their leaders, especially from someone who oversees billions of pesos meant to uplift the lives of our citizens and improve the quality of education of our children. Instead of addressing these issues head-on, they have chosen to create smokescreen, fabricating baseless accusations against Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes and other public officials. Mr. Speaker, the Speaker of this House, Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes, has shown exemplary leadership in ensuring that this chamber remains a bastion of transparency and accountability. He has no time for petty political games. His focus is on serving the Filipino people. Mr. Speaker, the Filipino people deserve the truth. They deserve leaders who prioritize service over self-preservation. This House, under the Speaker's leadership, remains committed to ensuring that no one is above the law and that public funds are used properly and responsibly. That is all. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Maraming salamat, Representative Erwin T. Tulfo on behalf of the PCFI Party List Coalition Foundation Incorporated and ACT-CIS party list. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Deputy Majority Leader Julian Jam Baronda of the Long District of Iloilo City to deliver his manifestation of support.
Long District Iloilo City Deputy Majority Leader Julian Jam Baronda. You are recognized, ma'am.
Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, maayong hapon sa atuntanan. In support of the approval of House Resolution Number 2092 expressing the unwavering and unqualified support and solidarity of the House of Representatives to the leadership of His Excellency President Ferdinand R. Marcos Jr. and the Honorable Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes in the face of serious and dangerous remarks and defiant acts that threaten the very foundation of democratic governance, rule of law, public trust, and integrity of government institutions. This humble representation expresses full unwavering support to the leadership of His Excellency President Ferdinand R. Marcos Jr. and our beloved Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes. Amidst the arbitrary actions and alarming statements issued by the second highest official of the land, we maintain that the preservation of the dignity, the integrity of the House of Representatives is of paramount importance. Mr. Speaker, in the light of the recent events that have transpired in the last three days within the premises of the House of Representatives, these arbitrary acts of interference and alarming statements reflect a clear disregard for institutional authority and due process. It is crucial that we condemn such acts and remain steadfast in adhering to the principles of good governance and rule of law. This is to avoid establishing a precedent for abuse of power. Mr. Speaker, the rule of law must likewise be observed by all government institutions and individuals, regardless of position or rank. It is paramount that we ensure the law applies equally to all without discrimination or partiality. We also emphasize the importance of safeguarding the public trust that citizens have placed in their elected leaders. Public trust is earned through transparency, accountability, and commitment to public service. Maintaining these values requires our collective and unwavering determination. Thus, this august chamber stands united in its support for the leadership's effort to uphold integrity and the institution and to ensure that governance is exercised in the manner that is both accountable and transparent for the Filipino people. Mabuhay ang kongreso. Madamong salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Madamong salamat. Deputy Majority Leader Julian Jam Baronda, Long District of Iloilo. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Tobias Toby M. Chango of the Long District of Navota City to deliver his manifestation of support.
The gentlemen from the Long District of Navota City, Representative Tobias Toby M. Chango. You are recognized, sir. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, a pleasant day to all of you. It is with great respect and a deep sense of responsibility that I rise before this august body to manifest my unwavering support for the approval of House Resolution Number 2092 in light of the recent events that have threatened the dignity of the House of Representatives and the stability of our democratic institutions. Recently, the Vice President acted with shocking recklessness, issuing threats, deliberately violating security protocols, and using invectives that are unbecoming of her position, thereby undermining the integrity of the House of Representatives and the foundations of our democratic institutions. While these actions and statements cannot and should not be taken lightly, this House will take the higher ground and choose to rise above such actions and threats, focusing instead on the principles of respect and civility that guide this institution rather than descending into the rhetoric of violence and intimidation. We must not allow individuals, regardless of their positions and influence, to undermine the integrity of this body and our nation through manipulative tactics, orchestrated campaigns, or the deliberate sowing of discord by those who seek only to create chaos and division for their own gain. Our purpose is to serve the people and to work for the greater good, not to be swayed by distractions, hostility, or self-serving agendas. Let us not emulate their divisive actions, but instead champion the values of unity, respect, and progress for the common good. Principles that Speaker Romualdes and this institution have steadfastly upheld throughout the 19th Congress. Therefore, Mr. Speaker, it is with utmost respect and a sense of responsibility to the Filipino people that I ask this body to stand united in approving House Resolution 2092. This manifestation is a reformation of our collective responsibility to defend the rule of law and the integrity of this legislative body. We as representatives of the people must resolutely reject any threat to our democracy, whether it arises from within these chambers or from external forces. We will not stand idly while the very foundations of our nation are challenged. Together, let us continuously express our strong and unrelenting support for His Excellency President Ferdinand R. Marcos Jr. and his administration, and to Speaker Romualdes, whose leadership has been a steady force in this institution. Through their leadership and unwavering commitment, we will rise above these disruptive and destabilizing forces and forge a future where progress and unity triumph for the benefit of all. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and may God bless us all.
Thank you, Long District Navotas City Representative Tobias Toby M. Chango. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, for the final manifestation of support, I move that we recognize the Honorable Gabriel Bordado of the Third District of Cabarinasur.
Representative Bordado, you are recognized, sir. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I move to withdraw my previous motion.
Please proceed, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt House Resolution Number 2092.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution 2092. Is there no objection? The chair here is none. Said motion to adopt House Resolution 2092 is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, may we recognize the guests of the Honorable Salvador A. Plato of the 6th District of Bulacan. We have from the Municipality of Angat Bulacan, Municipal Mayor Reynante S. Bautista, Municipal Vice Mayor Arvin L. Agustin, Municipal Councilors William S. Verhelle de Jos, Darwin A. Calderon, Evelyn J. Cruz, Melandro G. Igas, Luis J. Santiago, Ramiro A. Osorio III, Barangay Chairman Nereo S. Valdesco, Former SK John Patrick D. C. Solis, SK Federation President Mary Grace Evangelista. From the Municipality of Santa Maria Bulacan, we have Municipal Mayor Bertolome R. Ramos, Municipal Vice Mayor Pablo L. Juan, Former Mayor Russell G. Plato, Former Counselor Salvador G. Plato Jr., Board Member Renato D. L. De Guzman Jr., Board Member Arthur A. Legaspi, ABC President Leo V. Hildo J. Ramos, Municipal Councilors Neil B. Mateo, Esperanza G. Ramos, Mark Angelo R. Clemente, Carl Gerard Castillo, Jesus B. De Guzman Jr., Municipal Administrator Engineer Elmer Clemente, Former Vice Mayor Rico Jude P. Santo Domingo, Engineer Angelito Jacinto, Barangay Chairman Eresto de la Cruz, Former Municipal Counselor June Mateo, SK Federation President Marco Trahano. From the Municipality of Norzagaray Bulacan, Municipal Mayor Maria Elena Hermar, Municipal Vice Mayor Patricio A. Hener, ABC President Baltazar Espirito, Municipal Councilors Maria Cleope Esp. Pelayo, Municipal Counselor Edsel C. Mendoza, Michael L. Merced, Luzviminda Espirito, Abigail Reyes, Resti Sumbilio, Alvin Cruz, Sosimo Cruz, Barangay Chairman Bert Paul P. Torres, SK Federation President Christine K. Cadano, Former SK Federation President Mark Ivan Feliciano, and Former Vice Mayor Rogelio Santos.
Thank you, Majority Leader. May please reiterate, they are the guests of...
The Honorable Salvador A. Plato of the 6th District of Bulacan, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Majority Leader. And the guests of Congressman Plato of the Province of Bulacan, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, on the same note, may we also recognize the guests of Honorable Percival Sendanya, Representative of the Akbayan Partilist. We have with us visitors from the Network to Stop AIDS Philippines or NSAP. They are the following: Mara Quesada, Roberto Figuracion Jr., James De Leon, Ayla Beato, Liza Igcazinha, Leslie Tolentino, Roger Alvarez Jr., and Elaine Madula.
Maraming salamat, Majority Leader. To the guests of Honorable Percival Sendanya, Akbayan Partilist, to Network to Stop AIDS Philippine, NSAP, on behalf of Speaker Martin Romaldes, welcome to the House of Representatives. Magandang hapon. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, may we welcome to the House of Representatives the guest of Honorable Raoul Daniel Manuel of the Kabataan Partilist. Our guest is the mother of our Honorable Representative Raoul. We have Ms. Clarizel Joy Abiliar.
To the guests of Kabataan Partilist, Honorable Raoul Daniel A. Manuel, to Ms. Clarizel Joy Abiliar, on behalf of Speaker Martin Romaldes, magandang hapon. Welcome to the House of Representatives, ma'am. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, may we acknowledge and welcome to the House of Representatives the guests of the Honorable Representative Loretto A. Charon from the Lone District of General Santos City. Our guests are officials of the Barangay Upper Labay General Santos City, headed by the Punong Barangay Honorable Celso Osago. We have barangay kagawads: Honorable Dunisa Mando, Honorable Marieta Villatima, Honorable Jennifer Heronimo, Honorable Ryan Balunto, Honorable Mary Grace Almision, Honorable Pakito Baton, Honorable Ruben Santiago, Honorable Shaina Babes Burgos. We also have guests from the General Santos City Schools Division Office of the Department of Education. We have the Schools Division Superintendent Mr. Isagani de la Cruz, Assistant Schools Division Superintendent Ms. Murphy Seblos, Chief Curriculum Implementation Division Ms. Juliet Lastimosa, and Principal Ms. Rosana Salaño. We also have our student performers, mentors, and group leaders from Almatag Elementary School, Antonio de Pendatun Elementary School, San Sapan Elementary School, and Upper Labay High School Music Ensemble.
Maraming salamat, Majority Leader. To the guests of Lone District General Santos City, Loretto B. Charon, to the officials of Upper Labay General Santos City, headed by Punong Barangay Sagow, and the rest of the visitors here in Congress. On behalf of Speaker Martin Romaldes, mayang pag-abot, mayang hapon, kanyang yuntanan. Magandang salamat, pagbisita. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we acknowledge and welcome to the House of Representatives the guests of Representative Christian Unabia of the 1st District Misamis Oriental, Representative Attorney Lordan Suwan of the 1st District Kagayan di Oro City, and Representative from the 2nd District of Misamis Oriental, Yevgeny Vicente Bambi Imano. The guests are from the Municipality of Claveria, Province of Misamis Oriental, headed by the Municipal Mayor Ms. Merrilluna Abrogar. We also have Mr. Bob Mirkel Abrogar, Municipal Administrator Mr. Gian Fritz Biag, HRMO Elaine Edio, MLGOO Esad Dora Cabildo, Municipal Accountant LV Nakila, we have Menro June Oliver Abu Abo, LDRRMO Staff Harold John Franhe, Municipal Tourism Officer Glenn Conde, Municipal Health Officer Sheldon Cosadio, MSWDO Sheila May Tagle, Municipal Planning Development Officer Charonel Galendez, LDRMO Staff Julie Kokamo, MDRMO Ruthelia Casina Jr., Lido Johan George Sale, LGU Consultant Homer Bana, Executive Assistant Lynn Eva Paurom, Menro Staff Jasmine Quihano, BLPO Jennifer Baginang, MSW staff Maristela de la Cruz, Budget Staff Rolette Dahilog, PNP Chief Rodell Labadan, ILG Staff Jasmine Labastida, Mayor Staff Margie Yofrosina Waldon, Accounting Staff Celeste Marie Abas Kahin. And other staffs, we have Leslie Heather Nabong, Patricia Imano, Anatalia Gabia, Kathleen Kailing, Jervin June Samine, Gemma Go, Grace Linda Barros, and Julian Grace Pelenio.
To the guests of Misamis Oriental Congressman Unabia, Kagayan di Oro City Congressman Suwan, and Misamis Oriental Congressman Imano, welcome to the House of Representatives. Mayang hapon. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Gabriel Bordado Jr. of the 3rd District of Camarinesur for his manifestation.
Camarinesur Congressman Bordado, you are recognized, sir. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, several months ago, I delivered a privileged speech here at the plenary supporting the leadership of Speaker Martin Romaldes. And once again, I am reiterating this expression of support in the aftermath of Vice President Sarah Duterte's devastating meltdown. Speaker Romaldes has been demonstrating the genuine attributes of a great leader, particularly in this season of calamities. Instead of igniting tensions, the Vice President should set a good example by answering the longstanding question about her office's disbursements. It is essential that public funds are managed responsibly with the needs of the Filipino people at the core of every decision. The public deserves clear answers and transparency and not amateurish theatrics. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Maraming salamat, Congressman Bordado of Camarinesur. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, today being a Monday and pursuant to the rules of the House of Representatives, I move that we open the privilege hour.
There's a motion to open the privilege hour. Any objection? The chair here is non-privilege hour. It is therefore open and approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Salvador A. Plato of the 6th District of Bulacan to avail of the privilege hour.
6th District of Bulacan Congressman Salvador A. Plato, you are recognized, sir. Please proceed.
Thank you, Majority Leader. My dear colleagues, good afternoon. It is heartening to note that for the month of November every year is being declared as the National Children's Month or Buwan ng mga Bata pursuant to Republic Act 10661 to commemorate the United Nations General Assembly's adoption of the Convention of the Rights of Child on November 20, 1989. The theme for this year's commemoration is Break the Privilege and the Violence: Protecting Children: Creating a Safe Philippines. Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, among these issues include violence against children such as physical, emotional, and sexual abuse, bullying, fear pressure, depression, domestic violence, health, child labor, poverty, lack of education, drug or substance abuse, crime, ten pregnancy, and many others. However, Mr. Speaker, my colleagues, although not being given much attention regarding present issues for children in our country today, it seems that inadequate and limited access to in healthcare infrastructure and psychological support system should also be given much attention. This representation raised in a small town is a living witness to the inadequate and limited access to healthcare services and infrastructure. What do this representation mean by that, Mr. Speaker? Sa ating bansa, lalong-lalong na sa liblib ng barangay, although there are now the so-called trained barangay health workers, kulang pa rin ang kanilang kasinayan sa pagdeteck ng mga disruptive behavioral disorders sa ating mga bata, lalong-lalong na sa mga musmus na edad. It is being said, Mr. Speaker, that the most common disruptive behavioral disorders include oppositional defiant disorder, conduct disorder, and attention deficit hyperactivity disorder. Hindi may pagkaila na dumadami na ang lumalabas na mayroong mga behavioral signs of these destructive disorders dahil po sa tumataas na rin na kaalaman o awareness for an early detection, lalong-lalong na sa mga may access sa internet or social media. Pero ang tanong ko po, Mr. Speaker, paano na lang ang mga bata na nasa liblib na kanayunan? Mr. Speaker, ng mga magulang ay abalang-abala sa pagsasaka o sa pagtatrabaho upang maitawid ang kanilang mga araw-araw na pamumuhay? O kaya, Mr. Speaker, maraming magulang din sa liblib na lugar na hindi nagkaroon na mataas ng tas na edukasyon na hindi agad mapagtanto ang kanilang anak ay nagpapakita na ng normal o abnormal na behavior? Ang ating health care facilities and health services personnel in remote towns or parflang barangays ay handa sa mga tao sa mga ito upang tugunan ang sinasabi nilang early detection that can lead to better treatment or institution, better behavioral therapy? Siguro po sa mga orbanong highly organized cities na may mas mataas na awareness in dealing these behavioral problems, your access to professional help is much easier, more so if the parents are financially capable. Research shows, Mr. Speaker, that our country faces a number of challenges in early detection and treatment of behavioral problems in children, including but not limited to limited access to services, lack of national data, shortage of trained professionals and others. But I am saying again, Mr. Speaker, most of these trained professionals or child psychologists practice in urban areas, leaving children in rural areas with less access to these services. Haayaan na ba natin ng mga batang naiiwan na ganun lang? Na silang sa kanilang paglaki? Subject to the generation and public ridicule? Maybe it is high time, Mr. Speaker, that the relevant government agencies must take action to look on this pressing problem among our children. These children unfortunately born and raised in poverty. On this note, Mr. Speaker, please allow me to quote the Bible verse in Psalm Chapter 127, Verse 3, and it says, "Lo, children are the heritage of the Lord, and the fruit of the womb is his reward." End of quote. Indeed, Mr. Speaker, my colleagues, children should be considered as special blessings from the Lord and not burdens. Regarding the issues at hand, the people of the Bulacan 6th District fully supports our President Bongbong Marcos and the leadership of House Speaker Martin Romaldes. Mabuhay ang bagong Pilipinas. Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much.
Mabuhay. 6th District Bulacan Congressman Plato. Maraming salamat. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Plato to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate actions.
There's a motion to refer the speech of Congressman Plato. Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Loretto B. Charon of the Lone District of General Santos City to avail of the privilege hour.
General Santos Lone District Congressman Loretto B. Charon. Mayang hapon. Please proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, magandang hapon po sa ating... magandang hapon po sa ating lahat. I rise today as a matter of privilege to speak on behalf of the families from my district who have been for the longest time deprived of closure they seek, brought about by events that transpired 15 long years ago. It was a Monday then, and for many among us, the first day of any work week is an order of itself as we make our way from the safety of our homes to our place of work and back. Whatever religion that one ascribes to, we entrust our faith in a higher and divine being to watch over us and our loved ones at work and in school so that at the end of the day we are accorded the blessings of comfort and peace in our homes amidst the loving embrace of our families. However, for the 58 individuals traveling along a portion of the Cotabato Isulan Highway on that particular morning of November 23, 2009, the same cannot be true as the day unfolded in horror. About 4 to 10 kilometers from the town of Sarig Agwak, there's seven vehicle convoy and two other vehicles were accosted and detained at the checkpoint manned by at least 100 heavily armed men. The vehicles were then seized and driven for 2.5 kilometers to a hilly and semi-remote area away from the main road. That was the last time the 58 individuals on board the nine vehicles were seen alive. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, the gruesome manner by which they were deprived of their lives would not have been discovered were it not for the arrival of a contingent from the Philippine Army and elements of the Philippine National Police. Fifty-eight unarmed civilians were slaughtered, men and women alike, without distinction, and among them, 32 journalists from various print, radio, and television media, most of whom were from the city of General Santos and the city of Coronadal. The purpose of this message, Mr. Speaker and distinguished colleagues, is not to rehash the details of that infamous day because the records speak for itself and as the deadliest single attack on media in modern history, this crime is one of the most talked-about subjects for the last decade and a half. I therefore stand before you to re-echo the concerns of their families who until today are struggling to find meaning in the ultimate sacrifice their loved ones made as they stared at the eyes of death in those final moments. Justice, whether restorative or in its fullest term, remains elusive to the families of the slain journalists and media workers who are all collateral damage to a politically motivated attack in anticipation of the 2010 elections. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, this representation hopes that this message I am privileged to deliver in this August Hall, board and on behalf of the families of the slain journalists, reach the concerned agency or agencies so that their prayers and supplications for justice and compensation where there should be are favorably addressed without further delay. Violence against media practitioners in various forms and degrees continue with unwarranted impunity time and again, more so during elections as they are caught between contending parties who choose in most violent of instances to win no matter who gets hurt, a chilling statement of the dangers journalists face in the pursuit of truth and justice. This presentation takes note of the statements of the newly appointed Executive Director of the Presidential Task Force on Media Security during the commemoration of the 15th anniversary of the Magintanaw massacre, that the free press is essential to a functioning democracy and we must all contribute to ensuring that journalists can do their jobs without fear or reprisal. We also take cognizance of the fact that the task force upon the instructions of His Excellency President Ferdinand Marcos Jr. shall pursue its commitment to protect and provide a safe environment for media workers to ensure that such tragedies never happen again, an essential move in safeguarding press freedom as a cornerstone of our democracy and indispensable pillar in holding power accountable. The midterm elections is just right around the corner to be held simultaneously with the first Bangtamoro elections. And given the rapidly developing political atmosphere and conditions as we see it today, governments' resolve to address and prevent violence against media shall be taken to task. We hope that we are reminded always of these lessons that we learn from the sacrifices that the 32 journalists unselfishly accorded to us. For them, on that fateful day of November 23, 2009, it was just another day at the office. And for that, they shall never be forgotten. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, dagang salamat at maghayong hapon sa atong tanan. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Dagang kayong salamat Congressman Atsaron, Lone District of General Santos City. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Representative Loretto Atsaron to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
There's a motion to refer the speech of Congressman Atsaron. Is there an objection? The chair hears none. Motion is therefore approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, may we acknowledge and welcome to the House of Representatives the guests of Representative Philimon Espares of the Co-op Not Coparty List. We have his family, relatives, and siblings of the Representative Espares. We have Reverend Father Martin Laureo, Irene Opau, Teresa Suilon, Rabi Suilon, Audrey Fay Suilon, Athaya K. Suilon, Reverend Father Sani Esperar, Luz Espares, Kris Pacheco, Sofia Crizel Pacheco. We also have the officers of the Most Holy Rosary Multipurpose Cooperatives. We have Director Marian, Romel Rivera, Melissa Ancheta, Perla Manalo, Luz Dominda Del Rosario, Belen Salonga, and Beatriz De La Cruz.
To the family and relatives and siblings of our good Congressman and officers of the Most Holy Rosary Multipurpose Cooperatives, guests of Representative of Co-op Not Coparty List Philimon Espares, on behalf of Speaker Martin Romaldes, mayong hapon. Good afternoon. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Representative Rosana Ria V. Vergara of the 3rd District of Nueva Ecija to avail of the privilege hour.
The 3rd District Nueva Ecija Representative Rosana Ria V. Vergara, you have the floor ma'am. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, guests, fellow Filipinos, good afternoon. Last week on November 20, 2024, the whole nation rejoiced when the Office of the President announced that Mary Jane Veloso, an OFW, is finally coming home from Indonesia. Mary Jane is a victim of a drug syndicate who uses Filipinos aspiring for a better life by promising them with supposed better-paying jobs abroad. This momentous development is especially significant to me as Mary Jane is one of my constituents in the 3rd District of Nueva Ecija. She is from Barangay Caudilio in Cabanatuan City. Allow me to tell you her story, a story that is likely similar for many of our OFWs. In 2010, Mary Jane, a poor single mother, was seeking an opportunity to work abroad to be able to provide for her family. She was recruited by her friend Christina Serio to work as a domestic helper in Malaysia. However, after failing to secure a job there, she was told she could find similar employment in Indonesia. On her way to Indonesia, Christina deceived her into carrying a suitcase that cleverly concealed illegal drugs. 2.6 kilos of heroin was hidden in the lining of the luggage. Mary Jane did not know this because she trusted her friend who gave her the luggage. This led to her arrest for drug trafficking and despite her innocence, she was convicted in Indonesia. Indonesia's penalty for drug traffickers is death. In 2020, her recruiter Christina Serio was found guilty of illegal recruitment by our local courts and sentenced to life imprisonment. It has been almost 15 years since Mary Jane left the Philippines. In those 15 years, Mary Jane was arrested, imprisoned, convicted, and sitting on death row for 10 years. She was spared in 2015 following relentless diplomatic negotiations with the government of Indonesia which started during the administration of the late former President Benigno Aquino Jr. Mary Jane is finally coming home to the Philippines to serve her commuted sentence of life imprisonment. It is my prayer that President Ferdinand Marcos Jr. will consider granting her clemency. I am most grateful to the government of Indonesia, to President Prabowo Subianto and the Indonesian Chief Minister of Law and Human Rights Yusril Iza Mahendra who confirmed the creation of their prisoner transfer policy. This new policy is the legal basis for allowing Mary Jane to go home. President Marcos's recognition of Indonesia as a valuable and integral partner is truly evident in his actions. He chose Indonesia to be his first state visit as president in 2022. This paved the way for this new policy to be implemented. This has never happened before. Mr. Speaker, hayaan niyo po ako na taos pusong pasalamatan ang mga tao, opisina, at mga organisasyon na nagtulong-tulong upang makaui si Mary Jane. Una sa lahat, sa ating mahal na pangulong, Presidente Ferdinand Bongbong Marcos Jr., sa kanyang pagsisikap sa pakikipagnegosasyon at pagtataguyod ng diplomasya sa gobyerno ng Indonesia. Katulong ang Department of Foreign Affairs sa pamumuno nila DFA Secretary Enrique Manalo at Philippine Ambassador to Indonesia na si Gina Alagon Hamoralin. Hindi sila tumigil makipag-usap sa Indonesia upang magtagumpay sa kanilang layunin makauwi sa Pilipinas si Mary Jane. Hiling at ebalako po sa inyong mabuting puso, Mr. President, na kapag nakauwi na si Mary Jane dito sa ating bansa upang ipagpatuloy ang kanyang sentensya, sana po ay kalaunan mabigyan siya ng clemency. Ito po ay upang mabigyan siya ng pagkakataong makapagsimula muli ng panibagong buhay, makapiling ang kanyang mga mahal sa buhay at muling makapagbigay ng suporta sa kanyang pamilya, isang bagay na nawala sa kanya sa loob ng labing apat na taon. Walang kasalanan po si Mary Jane kundi magtiwala sa isang kaibigan. Si Mary Jane ay tulad sa maraming Pilipino na nangingibang bansa para makakuha ng mabuti-buting buhay. Dahil dito ay nagdu-sya-sya sa mahabang panahon. We can only imagine the emotional and mental pain she had to endure from being imprisoned in another country, a fate she did not deserve. Granting her clemency would serve as a symbol of compassion and fairness, admirable traits that our president possess. A presidential pardon clemency would also give hope to many OFW Filipinos also unjustly accused abroad. Mr. Speaker, I would also like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to the NGOs in our country that have tirelessly supported Mary Jane's cause. Among them are Migrante Internacional and the Church Task Force to Save Mary Jane, which in 2015 spearheaded a global campaign urging the Indonesian government to spare Mary Jane's life from death row. Their steadfast advocacy and efforts were instrumental in rallying both local and international support for her plight. I also especially commend the National Union of Peoples Lawyers, especially its Chair Attorney Edre Olalia for his invaluable contribution to the campaign. Not only did they lend their voices to the cause, but they also served as pro bono private legal counsel to Mary Jane and her family, ensuring they had the legal representation and moral support throughout this difficult journey. The dedication and collective efforts of the national government and these civil society organizations exemplify the power of solidarity, compassion, and justice in the face of difficulty. Their work towards a common goal has brought hope not only to Mary Jane and her family but to others who may be similarly situated. No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. Mr. Speaker, ito ang right-to-do process clause ng ating konstitusyon. Kinakatuhan nito ang pagpapahalaga ng ating batas sa buhay ng bawat Pilipino. Ito ang dahilan kung bakit ang mga taong naakusahan ng kasong kriminal ay kinakailangan dumaan muna sa masusing imbestigasyon at pagliditi sa korte upang patunayan kung siya ay tunay nagkasada. Sa batas natin, lahat ng tao ay innocent until proven guilty. Lahat ng akusado ay dapat dumaan sa due process. Kinululungkot natin na maraming tao ang napagkaitan ng kanilang right-to-do process sa nangyaring War on Drugs campaign noong nakaraang administrasyon, kung saan maraming naging alagasyon ng EJKs daman sa ating mga kapulisan at mga vigilante. Naiswalat nga sa mga nakaraang quad committee proceedings na halos lahat ng biktima ng EJK ay mula sa pinakamahirap na sektor ng lipunan. Sila ay kinatila ng buhay dahil lamang sa alagasyon ng pagtutulak o paggamit ng droga. Hinatay sila na hindi man lang nabigyan ng pagkakataon na ipagtangkol ang kanilang mga sarili sa korte at ilabas ang kanilang bersyon ng katotohanan. Hindi sila kasing swerte ni Mary Jane na tunay na pinahahalagaan ang buhay. Ang War on Drugs ay tila naging isang band-aid solution na lumabag sa human rights ng maraming tao, kung saan pinalbas ng dating administrasyon na tanging illegal drugs ang biggest threat sa safety and security ng ating bansa. Na ang mga drug addicts at pushers ay salot sa lipunan at wala nang pag-asang magbago, kaya dapat patayin na lang. Naging matagumpay na mapaniwala ang maraming tao lalo na ang mga mahihirap dahil bumento sa kanilang istilo ng ating dating Pangulong Duterte. Pananalita na makamasa, mapagbiro na may halong diin at tapang. Epektibo ang matapang na leader na may malasakit. Tapang at malasakit. Ang nangyaring War on Drugs ay tinugryang anti-poor dahil ang tinataarget lamang nito ay ang mga mahihirap at small-time drug pushers at users. Habang ang mga big-time drug lords ay malayang nakakapagpatuloy ng kanilang ilegal na kalakaran at kawain. Ang sisi tuloy ay napunta sa mga mahihirap. Poor people do not choose to be poor. Madalas, biktima lamang sila ng realidad na hindi lahat ng tao ay pinapanganak sa marangiyang sitwasyon at hindi lahat ay pinapalad na makatakas sa masalimuot, sa siklo, at sa linlahin ng kahirapan. Masakit man isiping, ngunit ito ang tunay na sitwasyon ng ating lipunan. Na minsan dahil sa hirap ng buhay, ang ilan ay naliligaw ng landas at napupunta sa pagtutulak ng droga upang mabuhay dahil na rin sa kawalan ng oportunidad na makapagtrabaho, na problema din ng ating bansa. Kaugnay dito ang istorya ni Mary Jane Veloso ay isang makapangyarihang paalala na ng halaga ng bawat buhay ng tao. Ang kwento ni Mary Jane na sinubaybayan hindi lamang ng buong bansa kundi pati rin ng buong mundo. Whoever saves one life, saves the world entire. A quote from the Talmud, the Jewish law. I remember first hearing these words from the movie Schindler's List. Si Mary Jane ay isang buhay lamang, ngunit pinaglaban ito ng ating gobyerno, simulan ng administron ng dating Pangulong Aquino, ipinagpatuloy ng maraming lokal at internasyonal na organisasyon, at ngayon naisakatuparan ang pangarap na makauwi sa Pilipinas si Mary Jane Veloso sa kasalukuyang administron ng ating Pangulong Ferdinand Bongbong Marcos. Dahil naniniwala po siya, katulad namin, na ang bawat buhay iisamanyan, ilang daan o ilang libo ay karapat-dapat na ipaglaban at iligtas. Dahil sa batas ng Diyos at sa batas ng tao, ang bawat buhay ay mahalaga. Muli, maraming salamat Pangulong Bongbong Marcos sa pagpapahalaga sa buhay ni Mary Jane Veloso. Kayo po ay huwaran na pangudo. May God continue to bless, protect, and guide you. I truly believe that the hand of God, Allah, has been at work in all of this. Magandang hapon po sa ating lahat. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Maraming salamat at magandang hapon. Third District of A.C., Congresswoman Vergara, Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Vergara to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
There's a motion to refer the speech of Congresswoman Vergara. The Committee on Rules, any objection? There here's none. Motion is therefore approved. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Representative Florida Rita P. Robes of the Lone District of San Jose del Monte City to avail of the privilege hour.
Lone District, San Jose del Monte, Representative Florida Rita P. Robes. You have the floor, ma'am. Please proceed.
Thank you so much, Mr. Speaker, and of course, Majority Floor Leader. To my colleagues in this August chamber, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. I rise in front of you today on a tragic matter that is also an opportunity for us to realign and focus our priorities on environmental protection, climate change adaptation, and disaster risk reduction and mitigation. We have learned often here how our country, the Philippines, is one of the most vulnerable countries to natural disasters. According to Climate Change Knowledge Portal, since 1990, the country experienced around 565 floodings, cyclones, earthquakes, tsunamis, and landslides, costing around $23 billion in damages. Additionally, because of our location in the northwestern Pacific basin, we are particularly prone to cyclones with an average of 20 typhoon per year that enters the Philippines, a re area of responsibility. On July 2024, Typhoon Karina affected more than 1 million families in regions 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 10, Calabar Zone, Mimo Ropa, and the NCR. During the most recent typhoon Christine that traced the Beagle region, disrupted transportation of goods and services, displaced our fellow Filipinos, caused billions in peso in damages and death of several people, rivers and spillways, including the 94-kilometer Beagle River overflowed. The flooding in these regions were exacerbated by the lack of proper drainage and obstructed waterways. This fate has a common occurrence in a country that has worsened through the years. It is for this reason that I call upon the members of this August chamber. Now is crucial time for us to legislate laws protecting our environment, waterways, and strengthen flood control projects to mitigate disaster risks and adapt the effects of climate change. What can we do to address these issues? First, an inventory of our waterways, spillways, dams, and natural water resources. Second, we need to determine obstructions, may be solid ways or temporary infrastructures, and steps to address this. It is imperative that we fortify our existing laws on waste disposal and management and craft legislations that will help us adjust to the new normal, a term internationally used to describe intensified natural disasters due to climate change. Third, we shall study innovation in technology for disaster preparedness, mitigation, and adaptation, determining the best steps in moving forward towards a resilient country. In addition, we must work to build strong institutions that can withstand and respond to the onslaught of disasters. This would mean investing in the protection, conservation, and rehabilitation of our rivers and waterways, as well as our forests. Intensifying information dissemination and education campaigns on waste management and environmental safeguards, and strengthening our people and responders. In conclusion, I would like to call on all of you. I would like to call on all of you, all of us, to rally behind a more environment. Conscious nation, one that is prepared to face natural disasters and adapt to changing times. Let us commit ourselves to building a ready and resilient society. Thank you and a blessed good afternoon to all of us.
Maraming salamat, Congressman Robes of the Lone District of San Jose del Monte City, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Robes to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
There's a motion to refer the said speech of Congressman Robes. Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Representative Zia Alontao Adyong of the First District of Lano del Sur to avail of the privilege hour.
Congressman Adyong of Lano del Sur, First District, you're recognized, sir. Please proceed.
Thank you, Majority Leader. All praises due to Allah, the sovereign creator of the universe, the God of no equal. Peace and blessings be upon the last messenger of God, the seal of the Prophet, Prophet Muhammad. Allah wa alaikum salam. Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, I stand before you today as the representative of the First District of Lano del Sur. I carry with me the weight of a region that has seen the devastation of war and conflict. I speak not only as a legislator, but as someone who has witnessed firsthand the horrors of destruction during the Marawi Siege in 2017, where I served as spokesperson of the Provincial Crisis Management Committee and lead the humanitarian response operation of the province. The scars of the conflict, Mr. Speaker, remain etched in the hearts of our people, reminding us the urgent and profound need for lasting peace and true justice in the Bangsamoro region. Mr. Speaker, let me begin by expressing my heartfelt gratitude to Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes and the esteemed members of the House delegation to the Comparative Learning Exchange hosted by Consolation Resources and the Irish Government, who join this transformative journey. The delegation was being led by Deputy Speaker Yasser Alontobalindong of Lano del Sur Second District, Representative Juselito Joel S. Sakdalan of Cotabato's First District, and Representative Munir N. Arbison Jr. of Sulu's Second District as member of the delegation. Mr. Speaker, their dedication and insights have been invaluable as we collectively seek pathways to peace and progress for our constituents in our nation. Their presence demonstrated the unity and resolve of the Philippine Congress in addressing the complex challenges of peacebuilding. Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, on the first day of our official itinerary, we began in London with two insightful meetings at the Foreign Commonwealth, the Development Office, or FCDO, in Westminster. The discussion offered a deeper understanding of the lessons and challenges from the North Ireland's journey to peace, providing invaluable parallels to the Bangsamoro context. Chris Flat, the Director of the Northern Ireland Office for Legacy, Public Services, and Economic Growth, shared his extensive experience in handling the aftermath of the Good Friday Agreement, including challenges with transitional justice, constitutional and electoral laws, and national security. He candidly discussed the missteps in addressing transnational justice and the lingering mental health issues among combatants, emphasizing the importance of incorporating these aspects into post-conflict recovery. I shared narratives from the Bangsamoro struggle, highlighting our peace agreements and the establishment of autonomous governance, drawing connections between our respective regions' aspirations for lasting peace and development. In a subsequent meeting, Mr. Speaker, we engaged with Saint John Gold, Deputy Director of the Conflict Resolution Department under the Office for Conflict, Stabilization, and Mediation, or OCSM. Mr. Speaker, the discussion centered on the delicate balance between justice and reconciliation, particularly concerning the prosecution of rebel attorneys under the revised Penal Code and the grant of amnesty as part of peace agreements. This dialogue was especially relevant given the ongoing political aspirations of former combatants seeking political aspirations in the Bangsamoro region, Mr. Speaker. These exchanges underscored the complexities of conflict resolution, emphasizing the need for inclusive policies that not only uphold the rule of law, but also honor the commitments made in peace agreements to foster stability and trust. Our recent learning exchange in Belfast, North of Ireland, and Dublin in Ireland brought to light lessons that resonate deeply with the challenges and aspirations of the Bangsamoro. The parallels between the North of Ireland's troubles, as they call it, and our long history of strife are undeniable. The shared stories of struggle, resilience, and the eventual reconciliation offer a roadmap that we in the Bangsamoro can draw upon as we continue our journey towards peace. We are beyond grateful to the Consolation Resources for this historic opportunity and privilege. It was indeed an honor as our delegate's spokesperson to share how closely Ireland's troubles mirror with the Bangsamoro's historic struggles and the Philippines' long road to peace and justice. In Belfast, Mr. Speaker, we stood in the shadow of the Europa Hotel, a structure that endured countless bombings during "the troubles," quote unquote. It serves as a poignant symbol of a city's resilience amidst decades of violent conflict. Like in Marawi, Mr. Speaker, Belfast bore the brunt of war. Its people displaced, its communities divided. Yet it also embodies hope, a testament to what can be achieved when conflicting parties choose dialogue over division and compromise over confrontation. Our discussions with the parliamentarians and ambassadors of North of Ireland brought to life the enduring legacy of the 1998 Good Friday Agreement, a historic accord that remains a beacon of hope over two decades since its signing. The determination to fully implement all its provisions is still palpable. It resonates in their voices and radiates from their eyes, a confidence rooted in their collective decision to end violence and embrace dialogue. The agreement was built on intentionality, where all parties agreed that violence must stop and reconciliation must begin. It emphasized the power of open communication, requiring immense patience to set aside pain and grievances, and the conscious use of language to heal rather than divide. Grounded in human rights principles and optimism for the future, the agreement underscored the critical role of women in transitional justice and the transformation of the police from a force of control into a true service for the community. These lessons, Mr. Speaker, serve as an enduring reminder that peace is not only possible but sustainable when pursued with unity and resolve. We are deeply grateful to organizations like Consolation Resources for fostering exchanges that have allowed us to draw from these experiences and apply them to our own peacebuilding efforts in the country. The parallels between the Good Friday Agreement and the Bangsamoro peace process are both profound and instructive. The Bangsamoro agreements drew significant inspiration from the Good Friday framework, adopting key elements such as the decommissioning of combatants, transitional justice mechanisms, and the establishment of a block grant system to ensure fiscal autonomy. Power sharing in the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao reflects the inclusive governance modeled and shined in North of Ireland's accord, while provisions for amnesty echo the spirit of reconciliation and reintegration central to the peacebuilding efforts. These shared foundations highlight how the experiences of one conflict-affected region can illuminate the path for another, offering not only a practical framework, but also a profound sense of hope. Both agreements affirm that lasting peace is achievable through collective effort guided by the principles of justice, inclusivity, and the courage to transform legacies of conflict into enduring partnerships for the future. Mr. Speaker, our meetings with leaders from the Sinn Fein, the Northern Ireland Assembly, and various political stakeholders illuminated the remarkable evolution of governance in North of Ireland. From deep-rooted mistrust and violence, they transitioned to a power-sharing government under the framework of the Good Friday Agreement. This hard one-piece agreement forged through decades of negotiations highlighted the critical role of inclusivity and mutual recognition in resolving conflicts. For the Bangsamoro, this underscores the importance of ensuring that our institutions remain representative of all voices in our region. The Bangsamoro Organic Law and the subsequent establishment of the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao are steps in the right direction, Mr. Speaker. But our work is far from over. True autonomy and sustainable peace require not just laws, but the unwavering commitment to uphold them through genuine partnership and inclusive governance. Our visit to the Sinn Fein offices, where we engage with the member of the Parliament, Declan Kearney, was particularly moving. The journey of Sinn Fein from a revolutionary movement to the largest political party in North of Ireland underscores the transformative power of inclusion. Declan Kearney shared stories of former revolutionaries who, through the Good Friday Agreement, transitioned from the margins to the mainstream, becoming key architects of North of Ireland's governance. This is a lesson we must take to heart, Mr. Speaker. In the Bangsamoro, achieving peace is not merely about disarmament or political agreements. It is about addressing the roots of marginalization and ensuring that former combatants, indigenous communities, and marginalized sectors are fully integrated into the political, social, economic fabric of the region. Justice too must be central to this process. As we learned in North of Ireland, justice is not just about retribution, but also recognition, acknowledging that pain of those who suffered and ensuring that systems are in place to prevent such suffering from recurring. In the Bangsamoro region, Mr. Speaker, this means continuing to support mechanisms like the Transitional Justice and Reconciliation Commission, which aim to heal the wounds of the past while laying the foundation for a more equitable future. Our engagement in Dublin, like leaders, with leaders like Bertie Ahern, former Taoist of Ireland, emphasized the importance of robust institutions in maintaining peace. The Good Friday Agreement did not just end the violence. It created systems of governance that ensure accountability, representation, and collaboration. In the Bangsamoro, we must strengthen the institutions established under the bar. This includes enhancing the capacity of the Bangsamoro Parliament, ensuring that justice systems are accessible and fair, and fostering economic opportunities that uplift all communities. We must also learn from the political shifts in the North of Ireland, where coalition building and power sharing have become the norm. The success of such arrangements lie in the willingness of leaders to set aside personal and political differences for the greater good, a lesson that we, as Filipino leaders, must embrace if we are to bring peace not just to the Bangsamoro, but to the entire nation. Mr. Speaker, the devastation of Marawi reminds us of the price of conflict. But the stories of Belfast and Dublin reminds us of the promise of peace. Achieving lasting peace and true justice in the Bangsamoro is not just a dream. It is a responsibility, a legacy we must leave for future generations. As I conclude, Mr. Speaker, we also extend our sincerest appreciation to the Irish Government for their warm hospitality and for sharing their wealth of experience in peacebuilding. Special thanks to Konor Prasad, Deputy Director of Ireland Peace and Stability Unit, for the Dublin leg of our exchange, and to Avila Kilmorey from the Social Change Institute for her guidance during the Belfast leg. To Consolation Resources, under the leadership of Jonathan Cohen, with the support of Sharon O'Toole, and to our tireless facilitator, Attorney Sheriff Salik, along with the dedicated staff, Kate, Bianca, and Patch, your unwavering support made this learning exchange not only possible, but profoundly impactful. Your commitment to fostering dialogue and understanding will forever be a part of our journey toward peace. Mr. Speaker, let us draw strength from the resilience of our people, learn from the experience of others, and commit ourselves to the arduous but rewarding task of building a Bangsamoro defined not by its struggles, but by its triumphs. Maayong hapon, kanining tanan. Salamualaikum warahmatullahi talai wabarakatuh. Marami pong salamat, Mr. Speaker.
May... May hapon for that Congressman Adyong from the First District of Lano del Sur. May the day of happiness be with Congressman Adyong from the First District of Lando del Sur, Sucran. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Zia along to Adyong to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
There is a motion to refer the privileged speech of Congressman Adyong to the Committee on Rules. Any objection? The chair here is none. Motion is thereby approved. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Representative Percival V. Sendanya of the Akbayan Partelist to avail of the privilege hour.
Partelist Akbayan, Congressman or Representative Percival V. Sendanya, you have the floor, sir. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, good afternoon. This November, we celebrate Children's Month. And as we wrap up, we are ushering another equally important day for the Filipino youth. On the first of December is the International World AIDS Day. We made a commitment, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, as a signatory to the Political Declaration on HIV and AIDS. We pledged to end AIDS by 2030. We made a commitment, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, as important as it is for every Filipino, especially among the young. As a country which experiences the fastest-growing HIV epidemic in the Western Pacific region, a country with 411% increase in daily HIV incidence in the last 10 years, we needed a plan and a target. I cannot overemphasize, Mr. Speaker, that the Philippines sort of holds the gold medal when it comes to HIV incidence in the region. And the plan and the target for this is the Seventh AIDS Medium-Term Plan. Our target is the 95-95-95, a global target that we have adopted. It aims that by 2030, 95% of people living with HIV know their HIV status, 95% of PLHIVs who know their HIV status are receiving treatment, and 95% of PLHIV-on-treatment have suppressed their viral load so that their immune system remains strong and the likelihood of their infection being passed on is greatly reduced. Hence the term "U = U," undetectable = untransmissible. So valid as of third quarter of 2024, according to DOH Epidemiology Bureau, the Filipinos are at 61, 67, 39 percent. The technology of HIV prevention and treatment is far beyond the world, but why do we still think? This is not to say that we have not made progress. This representation belongs to Akbayan Partelist. Akbayan championed the enactment of the RPRH law, the Mental Health Act, the Universal Healthcare Act, and together with the Network to Stop AIDS, NSAP, whose member organizations are present with us in the plenary this afternoon, we passed into law Republic Act 11166, or the new HIV and AIDS law. These legislations are important ammunition in our fight to end AIDS by 2030. But apparently, this are not enough. When it comes to implementation, we are still missing a few but very crucial steps, a few but very crucial pieces. According to the latest HIV and AIDS surveillance in the Philippines of the newly diagnosed people living with HIV, 80% are 15 to 34 years old. Data shows the youngest are getting HIV in the Philippines. This confirms the tag-youth epidemic. We are leading our campaign, being commissioner of the National Youth Commission, precisely to call attention to this alarming trend. It is truly frustrating to note, not only that we are contributing to the failure of the global campaign to end AIDS, but also, this hurts even more. We are failing the Filipino youth. We are failing a young girl named Anna, who was 15 years old, seven months pregnant when she was diagnosed with HIV. She was abandoned by her parents and was living on her own at age 11. It took a month before treatment was started before her parents, and they remained in Osho. Two weeks later, she gave birth. Her baby also is HIV-positive. We are failing Trixie, a 17-year-old trans woman living with HIV in Iloilo. Trixie is one of eight siblings. Despite being a diligent student, Trixie needed to stop school simply because her family could no longer afford it. When Trixie started feeling body pains, coughs, and colds, and began spitting and defecating blood, she remained silent for two months. She didn't want her parents to know for fear they would disown her. Trixie did not learn anything about HIV in school. She could not get treatment, especially on account of her young age. Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, Anna and Trixie are the most common PLHIV in the Philippines today. Young people don't give up quickly, even though they are at the edge. If Anna had given her treatment, HIV would not have been positive. If Trixie hadn't given her treatment, she would have had pneumonia. She already had pneumonia at that time. Trixie could have died at 17. Not only was treatment denied to the Filipino youth, but also HIV prevention. Adolescents who are engaged in risky behavior are also not able to access PrEP and PEP, HIV prevention measures that could save their lives. In fact, only 11% reported consistent condom use. The reason why they didn't use protection is lack of access. Lack of access to 61%. Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, as we celebrate World AIDS Day on December 1st, six days from now, this representation would like to propose three urgent measures to fully implement our HIV and AIDS Policy Act and meet our 95-95-95 targets. First, focus on the youth. Provide the youth with evidence-based information about HIV and AIDS, coupled with life-affirming and empowering messages, encouraging them to get tested, to enroll in treatment, prioritizing their quality of life and well-being. They should not feel fear and shame about matters that concern their health. Instead, they should be supported all the way. Number two, invest in prevention. In the HIV and AIDS response, prevention is cure. Adolescents should have access to PrEP, PEP, self-testing, antiretroviral treatment, and all of the HIV and AIDS services available to all PLHIVs and members of key populations. We should be upholding the best interests of the Filipino child in all matters all the time. Third, recognize the intersectionality of their vulnerabilities. These young key populations are also men who have sex with men and trans women. They might also be using drugs, engaged in transactional sex, pregnant women, migrant workers, people deprived of liberty. HIV and AIDS services should be inclusive, especially towards those marginalized. All of us have a right to health. There is no place for stigma and discrimination in a disadvantaged region. Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, the continuing uptick of the HIV incidence in the country is a wake-up call. Not to act out of moral panic, not to instill hopelessness and despair, but to be strategic and compassionate. Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, we can achieve our 95-95-95 targets. We can end AIDS. We can end this youth epidemic. We can and we should. We owe this to every young Filipino whose life is ahead of them. Let's give them a future they can hope for. Thank you and may all live.
Thank you, Akbayan Partelist Percival V. Sendanya. Thank you. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Sendanya to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
There is a motion to refer said speech of Akbayan Partelist to the Committee on Rules. Any objection? Chair here is none. Said motion is approved. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, may we acknowledge the guests of Deputy Speaker Yaser Balindong, Representative Joselito Saldalan, Representative Zia Adyong, and this representation. Here with us today is Attorney Ekshan Salik Sharif, the Country Director of Conciliation Resources.
To the guests of Congressman Adyong. May the day of happiness be with you. Welcome to the House of Representatives. May the day of happiness be with you. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we extend the privilege hour.
There is a motion to suspend.
Extend.
Privilege hour suspended.
Extended.
You said suspend or extend?
Extended, Mr. Speaker.
And corrected, Majority Leader. So please restate your motion, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we extend the privilege hour.
Extend, okay. There is a motion to extend the privilege hour. Any objection? Chair here is none. Privilege hour extended. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Representative Arlene DeBrosas of the Gabriela Partelist to avail of the privilege hour.
Gabriela Partelist, Arlene DeBrosas. Please proceed, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, on November 25th, we are celebrating the International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women, OIBA. The day of knowing each other, the first and continued campaign to remove the different forms of pandering and criminality in the country. The significance of knowing each other is important. In this case, we remember that on the day itself, in the 60s, there were three brothers, Mirbal, that was a patriot of Mercedes, Maria, Argentina Minerva, and Antonia Maria Teresa, the martyrs of Dominican Republic who were the first to join the 14th Revolutionary Movement. One of the great victims of the dictatorship was Generalissimo Rafael Trujillo, who was 14 years old when he was arrested. However, we still believe in OIBA, because of the overwhelming burden of the country's poverty and corruption. Whatever the form and nature of it, in the context of the rampant persecution, criminality, and impunity of the state that was in effect then and is still in effect today. This is a lesson learned from the same system of PNP Crime Incident Reporting and Analysis System, or PNP-CIRAS, that has processed 19,635 cases of the burden of poverty and children's rights in the first four months of 2023. This includes 92 women and children who were abducted every day in the country. And in the继续的不断增长的案例中， of the criminality of the 2024 year-end 2024, there were statistics of Women and Children Protection Units of Child Protection Network, which had 13,942 cases of violence against women and children. From physical, sexual, and psychological criminality, extortion, online sexual abuse, and exploitation of children, trafficking, and other forms of it. This year, there was a warning that was released every year from OIBA reports by PNP, that the offenders of the criminality in the country were being prosecuted. That 1,610 or 76% of the 2,114 cases in the first quarter of 2023 were child rape. And the suspects were themselves, or the victims of the murder. Except for this, the result of the United Nations Children's Fund, UNICEF, and International Justice Mission, or IJAM, that is being said all over the world, the global hot spot of child sexual abuse and exploitation materials, or CSAM, in the Philippines. That 750,000 active victims of children's rights were being found on various social media platforms, online gaming sites, and electronic mailing services. That's all we have to say about the campaign to stop the criminality in the country and the children. We have continued to make the public aware and to address the boundaries and resolution, like the divorce bill that is expected to pay for the victims of abusive marital relations that are being violated and the House Bill 401 that is introducing a number of amendments to anti-rap law and revised penal code, like the definition of consent. And the more radical laws and penalties for minors. Especially for those who are uneducated and in the middle. This is the end of our misery, the punishment of the vicious police officers, like the National Bureau of Investigation, NBI, to speed up the sooner than later investigation, to take action on the cases of criminality and poverty. Especially in the digital era, when electronic violence against women and children and online gender-based abuse and harassment. Mr. Speaker, in all this, we have seen the vulnerability of the country and children's rights to the criminality and poverty in the economic context that they are facing. That overwhelming reality in our country that the burden of poverty and children's rights and the pandering and criminality are from the hardest sectors and communities. This is a manifestation of the world's work. According to the Center for Women's Resources, the majority of 2.275863 women and children's rights in 2022 are rank and file workers, or ordinary women, who are not assigned supervisory and managerial roles. That 20.12% is irregular. And 71.8%, or five in every 10 of these women, are in the sector of service. More and more, there are many children's rights who are not employed. There is no protection, and there is no job for the unemployed. It is confirmed, according to IBON, that the level of employment of the women and children in the informal sector from 19.9 million in 2002 to 20.4 million in 2023. According to IBON Foundation. And despite the overwhelming Philippines' children's rights in the informal work in the country, it is also a fact that in neoliberal context, our country, especially the burden of poverty that is being paid for by the majority of women and children's rights in different countries, that is a risk. That is a vulnerable to the women and children's rights in physical, psychological, sexual, and economic abuses. This is a reflection of Mary Jane Veloso, a women's rights woman, the burden of illegal drug trafficking. Mary Jane was accused of committing suicide in front of the absence of legal enforcement and a clear indication that she is a victim of illegal drug trade and trafficking. Since then, Gabriela Women's Party and other children's rights, women, and women's rights have been accused of committing suicide. This is the end of the week, the news of the possibility of a return of Mary Jane in the Philippines. If we know each other, we can know. Kung kaya't habang kinikilala natin ang positibong pag-usad sa kanyang kaso, patuloy pa rin tayo sa pagkakampanya sa ganap na pagpapawalang sala at pagpapalaya sa kanya. Matutong hayan, mula sa mga kasong nabanggit na bunson ng vulnerableng posisyon ng kababaihan sa mundo ng paggawa, kung saan itinuturing sila at ang kanilang lakas pagawa bilang kalakal, at patuloy silang nasasadlak sa malalang power imbalances, mapaniil na work arrangements, at malawakang kawalan ng proteksyon, mula recruitment hanggang employment, nagiging vulnerable rin ang kababaihan sa ibat-ibang porma ng pananamantala. Ito rin ang kahalagahan ng ating pagkakampanya para sa pagtalima sa IALO Convention Number One Nine Zero, isang tratado na naglalayong tugunan at tuldukan ang violence and harassment sa mundo ng paggawa. Bagaman matagumpay na niratip ka ang dokumentong ito buhat na rin ang pagsusulong ng ibat-ibang organisasyon ng kababaihan at manggagawa at mga miyembro ng parlamentaryo. Ating ipinagpapatuloy ang paggiit at pagtitiyak sa maayos na implementasyon nito. Hinding-hindi din natin makakalilimutan ang mga biktima ng state-sponsored violence nariyan ng mga kaanak na mga kinitil sa ilalim ng madugong drug war ng Administrasyong Duterte. Walang pagdinig na pinalampas ang mga ina, asawa, at anak ng mga biktima. Mula kongreso hanggang sa mas malawak na pampublikong espasyo, patuloy silang nananawagan ng hustisia at pagpapanagot sa mga puersa ng estado na sangkot sa serye ng mga operasyong humantong sa extrajudicial killings at pagpapatupad sa gera kontra droga sa kabuan. Ang kultura ng abuso at impunidad sa hanay ng kapulisan, pati na rin ang pagigting ng militarisasyon ay nagpapatuloy sa kasalukuyang administrasyon. Iniulat ng Center for Women's Resources ang ilan sa mga kaso ng state perpetrated violence against women, kung saan mismo ang mga sundalo at pulis ang nangaabuso. Isa rito ay ang kaso ng panggagahasa ng limang kasundaluhan ng Ninety-Fourth IB sa himamaylan negros occidental, kung saan sapilitan silang nagdala ng dalawang batang babae sa kanilang campo at kinabukasan ay pinauwi ang mga ito so't-so't ang uniporme ng sundalo. Sa siyudad naman ng Davao, mayroon ding naitalang kaso ng pangahalay sa isang sampung taong gulang na babae, kung saan ang itinuturo na maisala ay miyembro ng Citizen Armed Forces Geographical Unit, o CAFGU, ng Davao City. Samantala, isang labing siyam na taong gulang na babae naman ang naging biktima ng gang rape noong ika-twenty-three ng May, taong 2023, sa Cebu, kung saan sinasabing ang mga perpetrator ay limang miyembro ng PNP. At sa kasaysayan ng pagigting ng militarisasyon at agresyon, ang sektor ng kababaihan ang pinaka-vulnerable sa karahasan. Tahapon lamang, binawiyan na ng buhay si Lola Estelita Di, isang comfort woman na biktima ng military sexual slavery sa pananakop ng imperialistang Japan. Si Lola Estelita ay aktibong kumilos sa Lila Pilipina at hanggang sa huli niyang hininga ay nanawagan para sa reparasyon at kapayapaang nakabatay sa katarungan. Kaya, Mister Speaker, maglaan tayo ng ilang segundo katahimikan para kay Lola Estelita. Ilan lamang ito sa mga kaso ng pang-aabuso sa kamay ng mga pulis at kasundaluhan. Mismong ang mga inaasahang magpatupad ng batas at magtiyak sa kaayusan at kapayapaan ng lipunan, ay sila ring nasasangkot sa mga kaso ng paglabag sa karapatan at pandarhas sa kababaihan at mga bata. Bagay na pinalala ang kultura ng pananahimik at paninisay sa mga biktima. Sa kabila ng lahat ng ito, isinisewalat ng panukalang pambansang budget na prioridad pa rin ang kasalukuyang ng kasalukuyang administrasyon, ang paglalaan ng napakalaking pondok para sa depensa at militar, habang gamumo ang alokasyon para sa panlipo ng serbisyo, paglikha ng permanenteeng trabaho, at tinapyasan pa ang pondok para sa kalusugan ng kababaihan. Sa kabuan, hangat mulat na ipinagkakait ng gobyerno ang katarungan para sa mga biktima ng pang-aabuso at karahasan, batay sa kasarian, at namamayagpag ang kultura ng kapabayaan at impunidad ng estado, magpapatuloy ang esensya ng paggunita sa International Day on the Elimination of Violence Against Women, at ang inaalala nitong makasaysayang pakikibaka ng magkakapatid na Mirbal. Liban sa paglalayong wakasan ang ibat-ibang porma ng karahasan, batay sa kasarian, nais din nating tuldukan ang kapabayaan at pananamantala ng mga puersa ng estado. Sa diwang ito, nagpapatuloy ang Gabriella Women's Party katuwang ang malawak na hanay ng kababaihan at mamamayang Pilipino sa sama-samang pagsusulong ng ligtas na lipunan para sa kababaihan at mga bata. Isang lipunan, kung saan malaya sa anumang porma ng karahasan ang bawat babae, bata, at mamamayan. Isang lipunang papawiin ang malalim na salik na nagpapanatili sa kultura ng karahasan sa kababaihan at iba pang vulnerable ang kasarian. Ang malawakang kahirapan, kawalan ng disente at ligtas na trabaho, kawalan ng nakabubuhay na sahod, inequalidad, at impunidad na umiiral sa lipunan. Mabuhay ang kababaihang patuloy na lumalaban. Maraming salamat, Mister Speaker.
Maraming salamat, Gabriela Partilis, uh, De Rosas. Majority Leader, please.
Mister Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable De Rosas to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there no objection? The chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Representative Franz El Castro of the Aktteures Partilis to avail of the privilege hour.
Aktteures Representative Franz El Castro, you're recognized, ma'am. Please proceed.
Maraming salamat, um, Ginong Speaker. Ginong Speaker, mga kapwa ko mambabatas, magandang hapon sa ating lahat. Ako po ay tumatayo ngayon upang bigyang pansin ang kalagayan ng ating mga guro sa Alternative Learning System, or ALSS. Ito 'yung mga mobile teachers na nakikita natin sa mga komunidad at sa mga eskwelahan kung weekend at iba't iba pang mga lugar sa mga bilanguan at iba pa. Sila ang nagtutulay ng edukasyon patungo sa mga Pilipinong hindi kayang pumasok sa mga pormal na paaralan dahil sa kahirapan at iba't ibang sitwasyon. Ngunit sa kasalukuyan, Ginong Speaker, um, sistemang pang-edukasyon tila napapabayaan at naisasantabi ang kanilang mga kapakanan at karaingan. Kasabay ng pagtindi ng krisis sa ekonomiya, ay laruling tumitindi ang kanilang pangangailangan para sa mas maalwan na kondisyon sa trabaho. Una, hirap makakuha ng promosyon ang mga ALSS teachers, lalo na sa mga gurong, hindi kabilang sa pormal na classroom setup. So imagine niyo, Mister Speaker, kailangan nilang bumalik sa classroom setup para lang sila ay mapromote. So talawas ito sa kanilang mandato na kailangan umangkop sa kalagayan ng kanilang mga estudyante. So nagtitiis na nga, Mister Speaker, itong mga teachers natin napumunta sa ibat-ibang mga risky na lugar, sa ibat-ibang komunidad, pero wala silang ano no, wala silang karapatan na mapromote. Pangalawa, bilang guro, isa sa mga binibigyang pansin natin ay ang diversity ng ating learners. Sa bawat estudyante ay may mga unique at distinct na kakayahan at pangangailangan. Trabaho ng guro, umisip ng iba't ibang mga pamamaraan para cater ang iba't ibang pangangailangan ng ating mga estudyante upang sila ay matuto. Paano pa kaya sa ALSS teachers? Isipin po nate, umaabot sa pitumpotlimang estudyante ang hawak ng isang ALSS teacher, samantala ang ideal class size ay thirty-five lamang. Paano nito matutugunan ang special na pangangailangan ng bawat mag-aaral kung sobra-sobra ang kanilang teaching load? And by the way, Mister Speaker, dito sa seventy-five na mga estudyante nito ah, iba-iba ding mga level ang hinahandle no'ng ating mga mobile teacher or ALSS teacher. Pangatlo, bukod pa rito, mainam sanang magkaroon din ng designated classroom ang ating mga ALSS teachers sa bawat paaralan. Napakahirap daw po na magturo sa ilalim ng puno, sa barangay hall, sa mga makeshift na lugar, at iba't iba pang mga lugar, no? Mas mahirap ito lalo na sa mga mag-aaral dahil hindi conducive ang kanilang learning environment. Nais nating ang, ng inklusibo at accessible edukasyon. Makakamit lang natin ito kung bibigyan natin ang sariling espasyo sa mga eskwelahan ang ating mga ALSS teachers and students. Ang bagit pa po ng ating mga teachers, no, dahil marami silang mga instructional materials na lagi nilang dala-dala yan sa bawat lugar na kanilang pagtuturuan. So mainam talaga, Mister Speaker, na meron talagang designated na classroom para mapaglagakan ng mga teaching materials sa iba't ibang level ng pag-aaral o ng mga estudyante. Kaugnay nito, ang pagbibigay din ng sapat na teaching materials sa panahon ng modernong technology o teknolohiya hangad na mga guro na magkaroon ng service laptop. Isang pangunahing kagamitan para sa larangan ng pagtuturo na ngayon dahil sa ating ano no, modern technology na at para maging relevant naman ang ating mga teachers sa ating mga estudyante. Deserve ng ating mga teachers, mga ALSS teachers, ang mabilis at dekalidad na service laptop at hindi ang mga kinurakot at overpriced na laptops. Mga kapwa ko mambabatas, ang mga suliraning ito ay bunga ng malalim na problema sa ating edukasyon, ekonomiya, sa lipunan. Sa kabila ng di-mapigilang pagtaas o pagsirit na mga presyo na mga biliin at habang nananatiling mababa ang sahod, maraming Pilipino ang napipilitang tumigil sa pag-aaral upang magtrabaho para sila ay mabuhay. Wala na ba silang karapatan na mag-aral? Sa ganitong sitwasyon, Mister Speaker, ang ating mga working students din ay talagang hirap din. Samantala, ang pondok para sa edukasyon ay hindi sapat o kaya'y napupunta lang sa korapsyon, katulad ng mga nadidiskover natin na mga korapsyon dito sa mga pumiti. Nananawagan ako sa Departamento ng Edukasyon at sa inyo po, mga kapwa ko mambabatas, bigyan natin ang pansin ang ating mga ALSS teachers, bigyan natin pansin ang kanilang panawagan at mga hinaiin. Kaya po, tayo po sa Aktteures Partilis ay gusto natin talaga, Mister Speaker, na magkaroon na talaga ng regulasyon dito sa dami ng estudyante sa loob ng classroom at magkaroon din ng service laptop ang bawat teacher. Nawaway suportahan niyo kami sa panawagang ito sapagkat ang ating mga ALSS teachers ay mahalagang, um, mga guro, sapagkat mga guro na nagtataguyod ng ating edukasyon. Edukasyon sa ating mga out-of-school youth, working students, mga bilango, mga estudyante sa mga mahirap na lugar o mahirap abutin, at iba't iba pang mga kalagayan. Hindi natin dapat ipagkait sa kanila ang kanilang mga pangangailangan. Sa mga ALSS teachers natin, salamat sa inyong walangsawang paglilingkod. Hindi kayo nag-iisa sa laban na ito. Patuloy naming isusulong ang mga karapatan at ang inyong mga kapakanan. Maraming salamat, Ginong Speaker.
Maraming salamat, Congressman Franz Castro, Aktteures Partilis. Majority Leader, please.
Mister Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Castro to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
There's a motion to refer the speech of Aktteures Partilis, Congressperson Castro. Is there any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, there being no member who wishes to avail of the privilege hour, I move that we terminate the privilege hour.
Motion to terminate. Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we adjourn session until tomorrow, November twenty-six, at three PM.
Motion to adjourn, of course, is approved. Adjourn until tomorrow, three PM, Tuesday. Maraming salamat.